I'd like to call the regular meeting of Mentor City Council, September 6, 2022, to order. Councilperson Marn will give the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Council, you're on receipt of the August 16, 2022 work session minutes. Moved to approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 22-0-069.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this ordinance primarily appropriates additional funds in our general fund, a little bit less than three-quarters of a million dollars. The largest items being to get a head start on possibly buying five more police vehicles with the supply chain. We're looking to appropriate $250,000 and $376,000 related to the municipal center's elevator upgrades. And then next largest amount is a $72,000 roughly amount to appropriate road paving at the cemetery. That particular item is simply a transfer out of the public service functional budget over to the cemetery function. So that's not really an additional, but it's appropriated to that function. And a couple other smaller items, but I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Mr. Philippiak?
Mr. President, just to one comment on that, you'll see that first appropriation increase to the police department's budget for $250,000. That's in addition to approximately the same amount that you appropriated in this year's 2022 municipal budget. But we're faced with an odd situation with the manner in which these cars are to be ordered. So at some point in time, so what we've learned is that there's going to be some very short window in October where vehicles can be ordered and they'll be ordered for delivery next year. So the vehicles that we ordered this year under the original appropriation, we frankly don't know when they'll be delivered. At some point in time, so while this represents, to use a term, doubling up on what we would normally appropriate, at some point down the line, there will be a lack of appropriation in the annual budget for such vehicles. But we're just kind of subject to, as Mr. Malinowski said, an oddball supply chain and trying to capitalize on a window, what might be the only window we have to order.
And a financially better window, maybe.
In all likelihood.
Thank you. Moved to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Orders number 22-0-069 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-070.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the L.A.K. 615 4.03 Bridge Deck Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Squigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. The Ohio Department of Transportation is requesting final consent legislation as a companion piece to ordinance 220066, which was passed on August 16. The companion legislation sets up parameters for possible decorative bridge lighting that would be 100% paid by city. City would only be responsible for the added cost of the decorative lighting over and above the standard lighting. There'd be approximately seven decorative lights pulls on the bridge. Decorative lighting is expected to cost approximately $40,000. Project is currently on schedule to be bid in late November, and construction is expected to begin in early 2023. Completion date is currently scheduled for late 2024. This legislation will also allow the city manager on behalf of the city to give consent to the director of transportation to complete the project as detailed in the LPA ODOT LET agreement. City will have a chance to review the bid for the decorative lighting to determine whether to proceed with the lighting as part of the project. It's recommended that the LPA ODOT LET project agreement be entered into with the Ohio Department of Transportation to proceed with the project. Thank you.
Council? Moved to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-070 has passed. Ordinance number 22-0-071.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, 2006, as amended, Section 1162A34, to add the American sweet gum to the list of undesirable trees species.
Mr. President?
Mr. Freeman?
Just want to point out that in the Latin description of the species, that it's not fluae, it should be an ae at the end, not an e. So I would ask that that change be made to the legislation.
Mr. Zeeman, right here.
We can correct the typelist.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
I'm going to kind of treat both of these pieces of legislation as sort of companion pieces. But I've tried my best to understand why people would want to pull down sweet gum tree when they're so beautiful. And I understand that every tree makes a fruit, and that's the way it reproduces. And I know that this is a nuisance fruit. But the tree canopy that these sweet gum trees produce, it's not going to be replaced real quickly. And in the fall, which is a few weeks away, these trees turn such brilliant colors that I think that wholesale destruction of them is going to be to the detriment of the city. I don't have a problem with the first piece of legislation deeming them as a nuisance tree, and the city would no longer plant those on tree lawns. I agree with that because people don't like them. But the second piece, I'm going to be voting no on because I hate to see these trees destroyed and leave just a barren landscape and be replaced by a small sapling of a different type. So I fully agree with keeping things the way that they are now and allowing the service director to make the decision on whether a tree is a nuisance or not. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll reserve my comments for the next ordinance.
Council? Moved to suspend. Oh, I'm just going to have him speak on the next one.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll. To the next one.
Mr. Marn?
Suspend, yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mrs. Dowling?
I'm really struggling with this. Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-071 has passed. Ordinance number 22-0-072.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, 2006, as amended, Section 919.03, to require the issuance of permits for the removal of street tree species defined pursuant to law as undesirable.
Council?
Mr. President? Just had a comment under Section 1E at the bottom of the page. It says, "The director shall indicate that removal of a tree shall include the entire tree and tree stump and may require the replacement of a tree as a condition for approval." I'm not real thrilled about the "may" part of it. I mean, if we are going to agree to take them out, I would certainly expect that we would at least replace the tree. So I'm not real thrilled about that.
Would you like to amend that section?
Well, I would like to. Council, so.
Mr. Zeeman said he could address it.
Yes. The only part that's -- that is existing language, and so it's a little cumbersome to read. I understand that. We could certainly try to approach it a different way to make sure it's crystal clear. There is throughout the existing ordinance various circumstances where the director can exercise discretion and state that, you know, this tree needs to come down for whatever reasons. And there's various factors in there, infestation, you know, near the end of its life expectancy. So the existing language is that the director can indicate the removal of the entire tree and may allow for its replacement. So that's the current law. The issue with the undesirable trees, then, is discrete. So where a permit is required, a permit is required to be issued because the tree is of a species that the council has determined to be undesirable and the director then has no choice but must issue that permit, this then would also eliminate the director's discretion relative to replacement of the tree. So that the tree must be replaced. Again, we're talking about a healthy tree being taken down per council's discussions at its work session. I think the consensus publicly stated at that work session was absolutely require that if a homeowner wants to take down a perfectly healthy tree, that they must, at their cost and expense, have that tree replaced, and that there would be no discretion in that respect. And so brand-new subsection D is an outgrowth of that mandatory permitting requirements and then also the mandatory aspect in the homeowner. So what is now relabeled as E then would still come into play where the director is exercising discretion. Now, that said, even in instances where the director has exercised discretion and said, "Well, this tree is infested," or "It's nearing the end of its life cycle," absolutely, council can mandate those trees' replacement as well. It's just that was not drafted that way. That seemed a little outside the scope of what was initially tasked. But by all means, this can be amended to mandate removal, even in cases where the trees are taken down for another reason. Thank you.
Okay. Follow-up. Do we have any criteria for the size of a tree that would have to be replaced?
Yes, I think the Master Tree Planting Guide has that included in terms of the caliper at what's called breast height, if I'm not mistaken. But I defer to the administration on that.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Blake.
You know, I believe that we have members of our --
I got them, Sean. I got them right here. They're going to come up next, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
Last year, we had on Duckworth, which is actually right around the corner from some of the areas where there's some issues with the trees, there was some significant storm damage to some of the trees on that street. And the neighbors came to then-councilman Landigan and myself and asked if they could be replaced. And the outcome was is that everyone on the, call this the street, agreed to pay to have the trees taken down, have them grounded, and have them replaced. And I will tell you, that's been a very successful. Again, some of them were healthy trees that had some damage that over time may have repaired themselves. But in this instance, everybody agreed to take, that they would have the trees removed, grind the stumps, and replace the trees. And it turned out to be a very good program. So I see some positive in this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Anybody else on council? Mr. Manager, go ahead.
If I can just speak to Mrs. Dowling's concern. Mrs. Dowling, what we brought forward, and you'll remember because I think we worked together on some of the changes that created some additional allowances to the public works director to be able to remove trees. And we looked at that language, and I think we actually altered that language and allowed for the "may." As a matter of practice, we require replacement in nearly every single case. The only exceptions would probably fall under that number eight, under paragraph C that you see here under 91903, where it says, "The tree has been placed in an area that due to the size or shape of the tree or the size of the area where it is planted, it is unlikely to remain healthy or to cause significant damage to the public infrastructure." We're talking about areas where you might have a tree lawn area this wide, and somebody stuck a tree on there, and it probably shouldn't have ever been placed there.
Right.
And so we probably wouldn't require it to be replaced in that case because it probably would result in damage to the infrastructure.
Or wouldn't survive.
Or just wouldn't survive. So that would probably be one of the very few cases where we wouldn't require it, thus the "may" in that language.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. President?
Freeman?
I guess my response is that, which I've discussed at the work session, is I think that this tree is fundamentally different than how other trees sort of manifest their, what they drop. And I don't think it's really compatible with, quite frankly, suburbia. When I first was reached out to by the residents, I was based on looking at the work session that city council handled and had in 2019, the discussions around amending the applicable ordinance in 2021. I certainly understood the arguments that have been put forth today, but in reality, I think that, you know, one person's aesthetically pleasing tree canopy is another person's tripping hazard. And at the end of the day, it's about the enjoyment of property that these residents who have to contend with this particular tree. Admittedly, it has to do with the high concentration of these trees. You would not have this type of planting today. And I think there's even a recognition by the Tree Commission, as my understanding is that they have a list of what's not going to be planted in the future. So the question really becomes is sort of what burden are we putting on the residents? And it's a judgment call. I will say, you know, many municipalities, some that I've quoted, but Marietta, Ohio in particular, Tree City USA since 1979. The program, I think, came into place in 1976. And they've made a fair number of adjustments, as I understand it, to make the sweet gum tree an exception to an otherwise strict regime in terms of preserving and expanding the number of trees that they have in the city as a whole, but in their public right-of-way. So I think this is a good balance in the sense of you can remove this tree, which I think is unique in how it grows and puts out its seeds while making sure that, you know, trees replace it. And I don't, I just went through North Palmerston and Silvermount today. There's a lot of trees that are on people's lawns, a lot of mature trees. I don't think this is going to be as devastating as everybody thinks it's going to be. I think there's, this is to give people the flexibility. I've had people who've talked to me that they're going to keep their trees, but they recognize and want to respect that other, their fellow neighbors have the ability to act, you know, in a way to remove the trees that they find burdensome. So I'm going to vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We have a list of people who want to speak on this matter. Please come up to the mic and give your name and address for the clerk. Cindy Fenner, first.
I'm Cindy Code Fenner. I'm a member of the Tree Commission, along with Dick Douglas and two other members of the Tree Commission could not be here tonight. But we're all unanimously against the removal of any healthy, living tree. While there's an estimated 80 trees on the sweet gum trees on the tree lawns on Palmerston and Silvermount, there are an estimated 300 sweet gum trees throughout the city of Mentor on city tree lawns. So allowing residents of these two streets, and I guess maybe the ordinance doesn't suggest these two streets, but that would open the door to removing sweet gum trees throughout the city of Mentor and could be a slippery slope in that other trees that drop unsightly fruits would want to be removed from the city residence or city home as well, excuse me. And we wanted to, you know, emphasize that there's a value to mature trees in the city of Mentor and the impact that removing trees from one property has on the entire neighborhood or even the city. You know, people who live in the, those streets or people who are visiting from other cities, the ripple effect of removing those trees will have an impact on other neighboring properties, not just on the one property where that tree is removed. And the value of trees has been reported on significantly throughout U.S. journals in that depending on the age of the tree, but the trees that are planted here in the city of Mentor, some of them are estimated the value is $1,500 per tree, up to as much as, you know, could be closer to $2,000, depending on the size and the age of the tree. So you can estimate that the value of those trees is anywhere from $120,000 to $350,000, the value of the trees that are going to be recommended to be for removal. So, you know, we want you to consider the other stakeholders in this issue besides the property owner and the value that all trees, particularly mature trees, play in the, not only aesthetic beauty of the resident, but environmentally, the carbon sequestration that takes place by mature trees, you know, the shade, the energy savings, all of the value of shade trees and, you know, controlling cooling costs, et cetera. So replacement trees of a much smaller size will not provide the same ambiance or environmental benefits. And the ripple effect, too, in new housing developments, which traditionally are, you know, clear-cutted of all trees before homes are put up, and the ripple effect of homeowners there potentially not wanting trees planted on their tree lawns, which would leave naked neighborhoods throughout the new developments in Mentor.
You've got one minute, Cindy. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I would add to that is that --
Say your name and address.
I'm sorry, Dick Douglas. I'm with the Mentor Tree Commission.
Thank you.
Taking a mature tree down and replacing it with a new tree whose diameter on, at breadth height is about one and a half to two inches is not the same. You're losing a tree who has a value of maybe $2,000 or $3,000. You're replacing it with a $300 tree. Now, the value comes from the shade that it provides, the energy savings, the interception of water that would go into the storm sewers, the trade-off in oxygen that it provides in exchange for carbon dioxide. So these trees are really valuable. And to say you're going to replace it with a new tree is not the same thing. If you say replacing in kind, that can't be done. We're talking about 30-year-old trees. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next person is Wendy Hudek. If you could please state your name and address for the clerk. You've got four minutes, please. Don't, if you guys could, we have a few speakers, so try not to repeat, if you could. Thank you.
Wendy Hudek, 6760 North Palmerston. I'm going to have Cindy read for me because I have to keep my mask on.
All right.
This is just a sample of, obviously, what we're dealing with. We're trying to make it a little bit better for us. This is the average size. There's thousands, as you can see, these are pictures from my front yard. The sidewalk is not mine. That's another neighbor's. So I'll let Cindy tell me. She's going to read my letter that I wrote.
Cindy, state your name and address, please, for the clerk.
It's Cindy Vanderhyde, 6773 North Palmerston.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and evening, I should say. The sweet gum tree is a beautiful tree. However, it has caused our residents thousands of hours of cleanup of the sweet ball, the gum drop, I'm sorry, the gum ball droppings. The tree has grown so large over the past 30 years that it has become difficult to prune regularly. The droppings do not decompose. They drop all year round, and they are hauled weekly into sometimes eight garbage cans, as you can see, for the waste yard, yard waste to sometimes pick up. Please note, this service starts April 5 and it ends at 8 in October. So once our cans are full in the cold months, the remaining gum balls sit on our tree lawns, and they usually blow down the streets and even into the sewers. This eventually adds to our sewer problems that we also have to deal with. This now becomes dangerous for residents walking in our neighborhood, as well as motorcycles riding on our streets. Most of us have already replaced our sidewalks at the expenses demanded by the city. A few years back, we did that. And yet they're still lifting and cracking, as you can see here and there. There have been multiple complaints of people tripping, falling, and sustaining serious injuries. Although no one has been sued yet, we do not want to wait for this to happen. The gum balls are also getting wedged in between the sidewalks and our driveways, and the gum balls have to be picked out with a screwdriver. So imagine if your tree is in your yard, this tree is in your yard and throughout your development, not by choice. I ask, would you want to replace it with a more desirable tree? Unfortunately, we do not get to make this decision, but you do. So I beg you, please make your decision in favor of us having the choice to remove this tree from our tree lawn and replace it with a more desirable tree. And then I have a personal note. I have lived in Mentor for 47 years, and I've taught in the Mentor schools for 35 years. I'm proud to be from Mentor. I'm very proud. We have all the amenities and the services you could ever want. That is why I urge you to really consider our request to replace the hazardous monkey ball tree with a more desirable choice and keep our Mentor citizens safe. Our neighborhood would appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy and Cindy. We have Judy Casio. Please state your name and address for the clerk, and you have four minutes.
Hello, I'm Judy Casio, 6610 North Palmerston Drive. I would ask you to please consider the value of the residence above the value of the tree. I walk my dog. I know almost everyone here twice a day. And I have fallen on this in the winter because they get covered with the snow, and you'd have no way of knowing that they're there. And I'm lucky that I didn't fracture my wrist. Next time, I may not be so lucky. Another resident may not be so lucky. These, there's no predictability of when these balls come down. The children of the neighborhood use them to decorate their snowmen because they come down all year round. You literally would have to sit at your tree lawn 24/7 to pick these up. Your neighbor's tree could be bare of these. Yours could still be full. There's no predictability. I feel this tree is discriminating against the residents of our street and the senior citizens, of which I am one, because it is requiring more work for us than it is of other residents that have normal leaf-shedding trees. It's like a one-time cleanup. This is all year round. I'd be afraid to go on vacation and worry that something's going to happen because my sidewalk may be littered with these. And someone may not be so nice the next time they fall and decide to sue me. I feel I don't need to be, have any more increased liability. So I'm asking you to please do the right thing and allow these trees to come down. Nobody's denying that there's pretty leaves, but they're also pretty dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Please hold your clapping, if you could. Thank you very much. We have another person, Christopher Whitworth.
Christopher Whitworth, I'm 6697 Silvermount Drive. And I agree with you, Mr. Blake, that they are beautiful trees, and they're gorgeous, and they're mature. And it's part of the reason why this sweet gum tree does what it does. It's mature to pass the point where it doesn't hold its fruit anymore, and it litters it everywhere. I can tell you, Mike, my other neighbor, Zee, we all deal with this, garbage cans upon garbage cans. Zee's daughter broke her arm last year when she fell on, tripping over them. But I agree, we need to take these trees down. The more thing, the thing I want to see more because of the neighborhood, and I've only lived in this neighborhood for five years, part of the reason why I moved here is because it is so beautiful, and we have so many trees in our backyard and front yard. But we want to see them replaced as well. And I agree that a small tree doesn't quite do it, sir. Can we agree on a taller tree, something that's more mature, maybe a six or seven footer that we can bring in to help bring that maturity through and make that happen a little quicker for us all? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. That is all we have on that, council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
I'd just like to add one thing. I think it's in relation to what I've heard. I think everybody kind of agrees it's a beautiful tree. But I also have a street in my ward where every tree on a tree lawn is an oak tree. And on wet years, they throw down a lot of acorns, which are like ball bearings on sidewalks. I've heard these same arguments in relation to acorns from oak trees and the dangerous nature of having something round on the ground. So I think that if we pass this ordinance, those residents are going to come up here the next time around and they're going to say, "We want our oak trees taken down." And there's a lot of oak trees in the city of Mentor. So I think what I'm getting at is we sort of open up a door to a slippery slope. The maples with the helicopters that plug my gutters every year, that's a nuisance as well. I think this is something to consider when we cast our vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President.
Mr. Freeman.
I guess in some reaction to some of the statements that was pointed out, we do clear healthy trees all the time in new developments. So why it is that in that situation, property rights, property interests are fine for the developer, but when it comes to this particular situation, it's not appropriate. All the things that have been discussed about the benefit of trees, totally agree, but this tree is fundamentally different. We only open up a slippery slope if we on council decide to do so. And I truly believe that this tree is fundamentally different than acorns, than helicopters, than anything else of that nature. And the fact that the Tree Commission itself recognizes that this tree should not be planted in the future is basically saying that if we had clear-cut Silvermount and North Palmerston today, they wouldn't have to deal with these trees because they wouldn't be planted in the place after it's been clear-cutted. So I think it's an issue of fairness. I understand the concerns, but I think that this is a balance between them enjoying their property and the fundamental nature of what this tree is. And again, it's not something that only we are doing. Numerous municipalities, which I've referred to, have recognized the challenges of this tree. So I know we can go around and around, it's a judgment call, it's what do the residents, what say do they have? Is the expert opinion trump the resident's opinion sometimes? But I think in this instance, it's called for to make the exception when it comes to this particular species.
Mr. Kirschner, move to suspend.
Mr. President. Before we go there, I guess a question for the law director, because I'm having a little bit of a hard time wrapping my head around this thing. And is this being classified as a nuisance or is this being classified as a hazard?
It's classified as an undesirable tree under the code amongst others. So it's not, not, we don't, the definition is undesirable tree. So that definition has already actually been amended by virtue of ordinance 71.
Okay. So from a legal standpoint, what would be the process to add the next undesirable tree? And like Mr. Blake brought some good comments, the gentleman said, you know, that he moved there about five years ago, it's a beautiful tree, but, you know, it drops things that they don't want. My tree on my tree lawn, it's the first tree that we have in the city that has leaves, it's the last one to lose it, it snows every year, then it loses its leaves. I've tripped and fallen. Then all of a sudden the snow melts, because you always get that snow melt before the holidays, and then I'm out there at, you know, Christmas Eve. So what would be the future process to add more undesirable trees and what would be the qualifications that deems that undesirable?
Ultimately, those are policy decisions for the council. It would be council's decision to, via an ordinance, either add to the list of undesirable trees or approach the matter differently perhaps with an approved street tree planting list that would be created via ordinance. However you approach the problem, ultimately it's council's decision, whatever, it's your collective judgment you think is good public policy.
I mean, part of this has to be property owner responsibility. I, for one, didn't buy a house directly on the freeway. I didn't buy a house next to Lost Nation Airport. I didn't buy a house with a pond in my backyard that's owned by the Homewares Association. So I purchased my house and its location so I didn't have those issues or those problems. So what I guess is, is that, so you could have a future council or we could be doing this every single year where we're amending this and reviewing this if we don't have this particular process that we're going to follow. We have a budget process that we follow and there's a reason for that. It's been successful.
Well, I guess in response, Councilman Marn, we have six or five other species that have already been determined to be undesirable. So clearly at some point, decisions were made based on the characteristics of those trees. So this is not beyond the pale to do this. And in addition, it comes down to what's qualitatively, I mean, if you hold up an acorn and this particular seedling, it looks pretty different to me. The notion, I guess what you're saying is, is what stops the slippery slope? What's the judgment of council as to whether other trees have certain characteristics that become problematic and whether it's worth based on the nature of that tree and the consequence of them added to the undesirable list? But again, it's a policy decision. You could also talk more about in, having the Tree Commission have, not only on a maintenance program, but a more robust process which is supervised by council so that, for example, undesirable lists that they put together, we have some type of review and council and discussion with them. But that hasn't, that hasn't occurred. This tree has been a discussion for three years and nothing's been done about it. And so in my estimation, I think it's a unique situation. But, you know, we can go around and around. I think it's pretty clear that this tree is different. The literature that I quoted during the work session reflects that, says that, if you want to go look at those meeting minutes. So I don't think that this is a, this is not something that's coming out of left field.
Councilman Krieger.
Yeah, just one question, I think more for the Tree Commission, and that would be, is there any chemical or anything that can be used on these trees so they cannot produce these mucky balls?
Not to my knowledge. Yes, there is, sir, but it takes a year or two.
Come on up to the mic, thanks.
Sure. So if you research this tree and you look it up, there is a hormone that you can inject into the lower part of the tree. The problem is it takes a full year to take an effect. So once the tree has started producing those seeds, those seeds will come out and be dropped. It'll be the following year that you would be able to suppress some of it, but you won't suppress all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, this is really a complicated piece that we have. So at this point, I think I'd like to move to place this on first reading.
Do I have a second?
No. I was-
You wanted to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Let's finish it up. But I was just saying that I agree with both sides, you know, it makes a lot of sense, but at some point, you know, it doesn't make sense. And that's what we've kind of been really going around and around and around about this whole thing. So there is a motion on the floor to suspend, and I was going to second that motion.
Motion to table would take priority.
Motion to table, do I have a second on the motion to table? You made the motion. You need a second.
Oh, I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion? Okay.
Not to table, but to put it on first reading.
First reading.
On a first reading, not to table it, but first reading.
If that doesn't pass, we have to call the law, and if it doesn't pass, then it goes to first reading.
That's all right, we can do it that way. I think we're good.
Whatever you want to do.
So-
Motion to table, go ahead.
Should we, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Do we have to take the roll, Joe, for the first and the second, since Mary already had the first out there or no?
Yes, it's, I don't think there was a second on the motion to suspend.
There wasn't a second.
There wasn't a second.
Yes, it was, to suspend.
The motion to basically pass it to second reading is effectively to table it. So that would take priority.
Okay. So we're good?
The roll would be called.
All right. As long as you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Julie, please call the roll.
Who first and who's second then? Sean?
Sean, called it.
For first reading?
Janet's second.
For first reading?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Marn?
Yes, for first reading.
Mr. Blake?
Yes, for first reading.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes, for first reading.
You guys don't have to say that.
I know, but we want to.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes. Mr. Freeman?
Oh.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Order number 22-0-072 is on first reading. Order number 22-0-073.
Authorizing the execution and delivery of an economic development grant with Mentor Childcare Academy LLC.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Mentor Childcare Academy has taken the place of what used to be cabanas, what used to be mean bugs, what used to be the avenue. They have put $1.5 million into the property. It is owned by Otis B. Thomas, who is a disabled veteran making his first investment in the city. Their payroll is expected to be $330,000 by the end of 2024 and adding 13 new jobs by the end of 2024. As part of our economic development program, which we do to assist small businesses, we have recommended an economic development grant in the amount of $5,000 for this business.
Counsel, move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
This is Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Order number 22-0-073 has passed. Order number 22-0-074.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Cone Inc. for elevator modernization and maintenance.
Mr. Flipiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I counsel, I think both all members here and the administration as well has been frustrated over the years by the hit and miss performance of our elevators. I'm not sure that anybody in here hasn't been stuck in there at least once. We, in fact, one has been out of service for quite some time waiting on an electronic panel that, parts of which are just not available. So we made the decision earlier in the year to completely refurbish these. So, Mr. Schwiker, we'll give you some idea of what the project entails, and we did bid this out. Mr. Schwiker?
Thank you. Bids were opened on August 19th for the 2022 Elevator Modernization and Service Project. There are two elevators that service Mentor City Hall, both of which open onto the City Hall atrium. The south elevator has been experiencing numerous malfunction, is badly in need of an upgrade. The northern elevator continues to function but was built as part of the original City Hall construction in the mid-'70s and is more than due for a modernization. The overview below, although somewhat technical, gives a good summary of the work to be performed. This bid also included a request for five years of annual maintenance to cover these two elevators, plus one at the police station, one at fire station number five, and one at the ice arena. Two bids were received for this project with the low bid submitted by Cone Inc. The base bid was $314,000 and the supplemental bid was $42,000. The supplement is for an upgrade to the door frame and the outer section of elevator door to stainless steel. Cone also submitted a significantly lower bid for the five-year maintenance program. Their five-year total was $30,972 compared to the second bid of $50,600. These bids have been reviewed by our consultant and it's recommended that the city enter into a contract with Cone Inc. for $356,000 for elevator rehabilitation and maintenance. Thank you.
Counsel, move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Resolution number 22-R-112 is adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
Before moving on, we should have had our young gentlemen stand up that are here for their service. We appreciate it, you guys being here. Come on up, give your names.
You guys are looking good.
I like it.
Hello, my name's Julian Pogemeyer and I'm with Troop 75 in Mentor.
I'm John Pogemeyer and I'm out of Troop 75 in Mentor.
Thank you, we're very proud of you guys.
Just a question, John, who's your SPL for Troop 75?
I believe is Andrew Freeman.
Proud of you guys, good job.
Great job, you guys, appreciate you being here. Sorry we didn't get to you in the beginning.
You got to hang around, listen. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Manager's report, Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. Counsel, we have three open cut requests for your consideration this evening. The first is at 9385 Mentor Avenue for, and Highsley Road from Dominion Energy for a new gas meter rooftop relocation project. That is a five-by-five open cut on Mentor Avenue.
Counsel? Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The second is at 8925 Mentor Avenue. This is a open cut request from AT&amp;T for a new fiber duct improvement project. That is a four-by-four cut. Ask for your approval.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Blake.
Probably Dave Schwiker, this is for you. The one cut there on Mentor Avenue is right where Fox Mill Road comes out, and that's our main ingress egress. Traffic's going to be maintained, they're going to not have a problem getting in and
The first is at 9385 Mentor Avenue for, and Hysley Road from Dominion Energy for a new gas meter rooftop relocation project. That is a five-by-five open cut on Mentor Avenue.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. McCrigger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The second is at 8925 Mentor Avenue. This is a open cut request from AT&amp;T for a new fiber duct improvement project. That is a four-by-four cut. Ask for your approval.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Blake.
Probably Dave Schwager, this is for you. The one cut there on Mentor Avenue is right where Fox Mill Road comes out, and that's our main ingress egress. Traffic's going to be maintained. They're going to not have a problem getting in and out there?
They'll have to maintain traffic. They'll be using a flagger as well as off-duty patrolmen to do that.
It looks like the cut is like right there at the entranceway.
It has to be there because that's where the manhole is. So they're going to be working right next to an existing manhole.
So you're promising me that they're not going to be blocked?
We won't allow them to block any.
All right, good. Thank you.
Did we get a first and second on the 8925 Mentor Avenue?
It's one we're doing.
All right.
Not yet.
You don't need it.
Please.
I think we already did.
That's what I'm wondering.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. McCrigger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Then finally, we have a two-by-two open cut request at 5787 Hysley Road for a new fiber service line for the new Blue Falls car wash. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. McCrigger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Then finally, we have a two-by-two open cut request at 5787 Hysley Road for a new fiber service line for the new Blue Falls Car Wash. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. McCrigger?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, the Brooksdale Road stone base has been placed from the Garden Lane intersection to approximately 500 feet short of Woodbridge Lane as part of our Headlands Road program, as this continuous curb placement is expected to begin on or about September 13th. Residents in that area will be out of their driveways for approximately two weeks while curb and aprons are replaced. Parking will occur on the opposite side of the street during the replacement, and letters will be distributed to residents this week describing that work as we have done in the past. This weekend, the Just Kids Stuff Garage Sale will be held on Saturday, September 10th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Garfield Park. Sellers must pre-register at 440-974-5720. Counsel, happy to announce that the electric vehicle public charging station at Garfield Park is now operational. Station is open during normal park hours. And the city would like to thank Mentor part-time firefighter/paramedic Robert Hendershot for his 29 years of service to the city. Rob has been a dedicated member of the department, as well as being a member of the U.S. Army Reserve. Yesterday was his last shift with the city, and we wish him great luck for all his future endeavors. And counsel, we have several new businesses that are getting started in our community. Mentor Child Care Academy at 9055 Mentor Avenue, Ohio Fashion Company LLC at 7850 Mentor Avenue, Glow Permanent Makeup at Cleveland at 8646 Mentor Avenue, and Oliver's Treasures at 7591 Tyler Boulevard. We thank them for their investment in the city, and we wish them great success for the